All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 15th. It is 7:02 PM. And this is a regular meeting of the full city council. We are being livestreamed right now on the cable access station. We're being recorded on Zoom. And we are translating live through the channel 15. With that, I will have the clerk call the roll, please.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Greeney?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy and Bellotti?
Here.
Ocasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera? Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And all these people.
And the city council.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just a moment of discretion, if I could. One of our great Holyoaks passed away this afternoon. I was just hopeful we could have, with your permission, a moment of silence.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so this is for Joe Ho Hall. He died this afternoon. He's a Holyoke High School Hall of Famer, Northfield Mount Hermon Hall of Famer, taught at the college for 30 years, a beloved professor. We could just have a moment of silence.
Absolutely. Please, moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. So first on our agenda this evening is a public hearing. I would entertain-
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to open a public hearing. This is for the poll petition for 70 Eli Street. Is there anyone here from the public that's here to comment this evening on the 70 Eli Street? I know we have a lot of folks in the audience, but is anyone here in attendance for the poll installation on 70 Eli? I don't see anyone here in council chambers, and I do know that we have Vin from the Holyoke Gas and Electric. If, uh... Hi.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, council members. Vin O'Connell, Holyoke Gas and Electric. I work for the electric division. You're representing Holyoke for the petition at 70 Eli Street for a poll set.
Any other information that you would like to provide us before I open it up for comments to our counselors?
It's gonna be primarily used right now for poll guiding, and the secondary use for next year will be to refeed the rosary towers from some new underground primary conductor.
Okay. Thank you. All set? Other questions or comments from counselors?
No one would like to see-
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to grant the petition?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to grant the petition, and the clerk will call the roll.
Murphy and Bellotti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
See.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, everyone. With that, you have granted the petition. Up next, we have public comment. Yes.
President, if I may, there are several people in the audience that would like to speak. There only have ten on the sheet. I'm just wondering if I could have a motion to add five more names to that sheet.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow five additional people to speak.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow an additional five people to speak this evening, and-
And I believe it's two minutes, right, Madam President?
It is. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. I have names on the sheet that I'll go through as they're signed up. And the way this works is everyone will have two minutes, as mentioned. And I do have this digital clock that you can all look at.
Yeah. Gotta get it plugged in.
So basically, the way it works is you can come up to the microphone here as I read your name, and what we'd like you to do is just please state very clearly your name and your address into the microphone, and we will keep track of time for you. You can look at it here, and I'll also be keeping track of time. We've found in the past that when I interrupt you to say that you only have a minute left or whatever, it really throws people off. So we're trying something new, trying to make government efficient. So with that, and then, of course, I can't see that, so I'm gonna time it from here. And we'll just... Okay. So first up on this list, I have Chris Butler. Hi, Chris. And you, I will, I will start once you've said your name and address into the record.
Okay. Chris Butler, 1035 Hamden Street. I want to just start by thanking Patty Devine, Councilor Devine, and Counselor Jordan, and Counselor Bartley for listening to homeowners in the city, particularly us landlords of I gave you guys copies of the letters I got from the building department, and apparently my letters were being sent to my old house, and I never received them. The first I heard, really heard about what was going on to the three family owners in Holyoke was the mayor on the news talking about fines, talking about liens, talking about legal actions on people who didn't come in compliance. So then I got onto the building department page, and I watched their YouTube video, which it dawned on me, I'm part of this. And so I instantly called and left the message, and the next day I started the process of coming in to compliance. I've been told verbally that my fines have reset due to them mailing my stuff to the wrong address, but nothing in writing yet. But here's the problem, is I spent all week getting an electrician set up, getting, trying to find an engineer, and even though that I supposedly have 60 days, there's no way this is gonna get done in 60 days, and I'm gonna get fined. So people know that I work for the city. I've studied books on code inspections and fire inspections, all for the fire department. But the key to all of that is to get the homeowner in compliance. It's not these fines and the threats of fines. And what I'm asking tonight is if you can please support, well, one, read my letter that I got from the city, and put yourself in my shoes. You know, it says seven days on there before you get fined, and they say it's a mistake, it's 30 days, but just put yourself into our shoes, and, you know, when you hear some people's stories, it's just utterly crazy, the amount of money. But that said, please support the Councilor Devine's order tonight, and send that to the mayor. I mean, hopefully, everybody will support it, and maybe we can get some resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. All right. Up next, we have Mark Nadorf.
Evening. First of all, I want to thank everybody for allowing us to speak today.
Just your name and your address.
I'm sorry, Mark Nadorf, 150 Lincoln Street. Again, thanks for allowing us to speak. I just have a couple, a couple of things I want to talk about. You'll hear the details and the horror stories all over the city from anyone who owns some property. I'm just asking for a couple of things. One is that you can find us some relief on the timeframes to get this work done. Trying to hire contractors and get the work done is just, it just can't work with the amount of people that need it all done at the same time, and, and the timeframes of the contractors. It just, it's unreasonable. And secondly, that these fines also be looked at. I think that they're, again, timeframes and just, just don't work. And that's really it. The only other thing I would ask is that the building department could be a little more cooperative in terms of coming to the properties to help us figure out what's gotta get done to satisfy the city. So other than that, thank you very much for allowing us to speak. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Stephen Bosco.
Hi, folks. Stephen Bosco, 430 Appleton Street. Thank you for letting me speak and letting others speak as well. I'm the founder and general manager of Arrow Properties. Some of you know me. We are a 220-unit housing company. We've been in business for 31 years. We employ 10 people here in the city of Holyoke. And we house a lot of tenants as well, obviously. And I want you to imagine, members of the council, just for a moment here, that the city officials come to your house, and they inspect your house, and they tell you that not only does everything have to be in good working order on your house, but you have to install components and systems in your house that were never previously required. Maybe they don't like the way a stairway looks. You gotta rip it out and put a whole new one in. It might cost you thousands of dollars, or tens of thousands of dollars. And if you don't do it fast enough, we're gonna fine you $300 a day. And if you don't pay the fines, we're gonna put them on your property as a lien, and then we're gonna have the city solicitor take you to court, and we'll take your property away from you. This sort of rhetorical question, I know nobody wants anything like that to happen. And that's, that's sort of what we're being faced with right now as multifamily property owners. And I want to go back and just emphasize something I said, that the city is not just asking us to bring things into compliance, they're asking us to install things that were never previously required. In my 31 years in business, I've, I've never, in any, any town or city, and I've had property in a bunch of towns in the Boston area, too, I've never had any city tell me, you have to put in all these new things. That's a significant change from the way building codes and building laws are normally enforced. One final thing, as I, I think I, maybe I neglected to mention, I, I try to, I try to be profitable, but I try to run a good business that does right in the world and does right by community, my communities, who I pay my staff a living wage, I charge my tenants a reasonable rent. How much, let's, let's just zoom out for a second and ask ourselves-
We are at time.
How much more expensive do you want housing to be for people who rent? Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, I have Gabriel Myrtle Ave.
Outie, everybody. Oh, I got it, the short guy thing here. Hi, everybody. My name is Gabriel Qualia. I live at, let me double-check, 7 Myrtle Ave here in Holyoke. I lived in the city for about 16 years until my father got sick, and I went and took care of him for a couple of years till he passed away. And when he passed away, I bought a multifamily home here in Holyoke because I love this city and I love its people, right? And I also, some of you may know, I've worked in various capacities with people who are experiencing homelessness, and I wanted to be able to offer below-market rent rates to people who needed help, right? I grew up in a place in Springfield, similar to my house, where the, the owner was a first-generation immigrant who was a seamstress who managed to own, you know, property and retire very well because she owned a multifamily house. A lot of us are, you know, small, we're not even, I wouldn't even consider us business owners. We just have a proposition where we have less money that we have to pay for principal, right? And, you know, we know our tenants, we're reasonable with them, we charge them below-market rates. Usually, most of the people I've talked to are in the same boat that I am, right? And I think, you know, with all the housing problems that are going on right now, why would we want to do anything that's gonna drive people, individuals, small business owners, working-class people who are just trying to build equity for their retirement, force them out and force in large companies who want to gobble them up? I have a friend I just spoke to this weekend who lives in a large building in the city that was bought out, and he said overnight his rent went up $350. $350. That's a lot, like, a lot of people can't absorb that. And if we drive people out, people like myself and my, my other small, you know, homeowners here, multifamily owners, you know, that's what we're gonna be left with, right? We're not gonna have people who know who their tenants are. I see my tenants almost every day and talk to them, probably to their dismay, that, what is this guy doing talking to me again, right? But, you know, I know who they are, and I'm willing to work with them if something happens. Large companies aren't gonna do that. So I just wanted to bring in that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, I have Charlene.
Charlene Robinson, 125 Beet Street. My fines were actually recently waived. They sent me a second letter saying that they were gonna waive my fines, but the reason I showed up is because I am actually new to Holyoke. I moved here from Boston about a year and a half ago, just because I see a future in the city and I feel like I can create a life here for me and my child. It's just me, a single homeowner, and I was absolutely shocked when I received the out-of-compliance letter and saying that I only had 30 days. And when I went to different electricians, they were quoting me upwards of $5,000, ridiculous amounts. I don't know if it's because I'm a woman, I don't know if it's because I gave them a deadline of when I needed the work done by, and they were upcharging, but I literally cried for probably a week just trying to figure out how I was gonna come up with the money. I was able to come up with the money, but then they still sent me that letter with the fine on it, and that made me cry because I'm like, how am I gonna pay this fine? Which I'm glad now that they sent the letter saying that it's waived, but I came to the meeting still because I'm, for all of the other homeowners who are facing these fines, $300 per day is egregious. It's ridiculous, it's unreasonable, and most people, if they find themselves in a hole that deep, they're not gonna be able to dig themselves out. And I know a lot of people work hard for their homes, some people came from other countries. My neighbor doesn't speak English, so I'm also representing my neighbor who doesn't want to cause any trouble. She said she didn't want to come to the meeting because she doesn't, you know, speak that much English or whatever, but she came in from another country to start, and she worked hard for her home, and I think she got fines over $10,000. So that's it. Is my two minutes up.
You did good. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
More time. I would like to say that I do think that homeowners should have been granted at least minimum of six months to a year to come into compliance before facing fines.
That's my alarm. Thank you. I got a lot of timers going on, I just want to make sure we're good. Up next, I have Jane from Alderman Street.
Hi, my name is Jane, 36 Alderman Street. LeFave.
Thank you.
I just wanna, I could tell you, you've heard a bunch of these stories, and I kinda want to talk about some of the macro level. So I wrote a few things down. So the city did not conduct individual inspections, and the city claims about noncompliance seem to be based on assumptions or general observations. This raises questions about accuracy and fairness of their assessments. They gave us all a blanket statement. Nobody came in.
Can you just speak into the microphone a second?
Yep. They gave us all a blanket statement, nobody came in, as far as we know, and looked at our property to say that we, you know, nobody knows whether we're in compliance or not. So the other thing I want to say is if the city is conducting inspections without proper notice or warrants, they could be violating the Fourth and Fifth Amendments of our Constitution. In addition, the excessive fines for noncompliance violate the Eighth Amendment, which prohibits excessive fines when the intent is to generate revenue. And so the way the city went about this, it doesn't seem to be a safety issue, it seems to be a money grab.
Thank you.
Also, if you've had past inspections that have been conducted, and the city now claims that there's widespread noncompliance, it raises questions about the competency of the integrity of the inspectors involved. And it also creates a burden on the taxpayer. If the city's suing for, over these practices, the financial burden could ultimately fall on the taxpayers and make this a costly endeavor for the city. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Yep.
Up next, I have Sonia Quiñones.
Hi. My name is Sonia Quiñones. My address, 29 Vernon Street. I'm here because today I, um, I was on vacation. When I came home, I, I got this letter in the mail from the building inspection, and I didn't understand everything, so, and then I decided to go over there in person, and I was told that I have to put the application and, and pay for the application, and, and as long, I had time to look for the, you know, like, electrician with the license and all that, and as long I kept communicating with them. So I went today and I got everything done with the exit signs and the lights, and then they told me that I have a fine of $9,000. When I asked, I said, I know somebody that paid for an architect over $2,000, so how much time I have to find one and pay for that? And then they just told me, good question, and then they went in, you know, into my address, and then they said, well, as of now, you have $9,000 in fine. So of course, I got very upset. I started crying, and I said, if I'm struggling to get an architect and pay that, and maybe if it doesn't pass code, imagine after that, all the labor and material, and so that's the reason I'm here. And I was never told that every 30 days I had to go back to them and inform how everything is, what's going on. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, I have Sarah LaRose.
Sarah LaRose, 77 Elmwood Ave. As you've heard from others, the COI compliance requirements imposed by the building department have been characterized by unrealistic timelines, unclear and inconsistent communication, and exorbitant fines. Although implementation of these requirements may have been planned by someone sitting at a desk, the poor execution of which has had real-life consequences, namely that the fines imposed have put hundreds of multifamily homeowners and their tenants at risk of losing their homes. At best, this is a glaring example of bureaucratic ineptitude, and at worst, this was never about compliance at all, but was instead about the fines. Make no mistake, many of, many of us, myself included, believed the latter and that this was a blatant abuse of power by the mayor's office. Nevertheless, the majority of us remain committed to compliance. Accordingly, on behalf of the hundreds of affected multifamily homeowners within the city of Holyoke, I would like to request that the city council orders the following. First, that a temporary moratorium on COI violations and associated fines be established in order to provide homeowners with sufficient time to achieve compliance. Second, that all fines imposed to date be rescinded. And third, that the building department is held accountable to develop a workable plan for both current and future implementation of COI enforcement. Despite my clear frustrations, I would personally be willing to put those aside to collaborate with the building department and provide support and input as needed. I would like to thank counselors Bartley and Devine, who I have personally spoken to and who have been so supportive on this matter. Thank you to Counselor Jordan. I've heard from others, you've also been very supportive, and, and thank you for any other counselor that's been supportive on this matter that I haven't addressed. As one of the many currently at risk of losing my home and safety net due to this issue, I implore the city councils to please, please help your constituents. Please don't let the mayor's office and building department bully us into losing our homes. I understand that there are two late filed orders regarding this matter, and I ask you to consider them tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. So that's all, that's what I have signed up. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, please hold. I lied. We have, on Zoom, we have Spencer Fox Peterson.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Spencer Fox Peterson, 51 Portland Street. I am here to discuss a couple of issues that have propped up over the summer when we were on break. You know, there was more street violence in Holyoke, and it's really tragic. And to my dismay, seeing the response of boosting more policing as a, as a solution, I think it is shortsighted and doesn't help the problem. And I would really like to stop trusting departments that hold people like Officer Reyes in high positions, who are discredited, resigned, and potentially costing the city six figures in compensation to those he hurt. And I'm being vague, so if anybody wants to look this up, it's, you can just Google Reyes, Holyoke. He's a police officer who is no longer with us on the department due to accusations from a former employee. So like, you know, I'm, this person worked for the department for a long time, was in charge of a lot of things, was on the mayor's transition team, and he was accused of some pretty heinous things, and he doesn't work for us anymore. So, you know, it's like, we gotta stop looking at this institution, it's not a solution. We need to invest in housing, and it's interesting that everybody was here as landlords worrying about this, and maybe we shouldn't be tying wealth to housing because it's causing a lot of pain for everybody. And the solution to street violence is addressing poverty, which includes housing, you know, income and education, so, and healthcare. So I would like to start being more progressive in our solutions, and I think we can do that in Holyoke, and we need to stick to what the core problem is and not look for quick Band-Aid solutions like throwing more money at the police, when clearly the people that work in there aren't to be trusted.
We're at time now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others in the room before, just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone, I don't have anyone else signed up. Just making sure. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Sullivan, did you-
Yeah, I'd like to just take a moment while all the property owners are here. This is the first I've seen one of these letters, and I just want to clarify something. I've lived in Holyoke for 70 years. My name is Michael J. Sullivan. I know five other Michael J. Sullivans. This letter says, please contact the local inspector, Mike Sullivan. I don't want anybody to mistake that it's me, the local inspector.
Good for clarification. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Fair enough. So-
And also, it's not the former mayor, so there's two of the five.
Many Michael J. Sullivans out there. We do have some orders tonight that are related to this. If we want to take them up and refer them to committee or-
Make a motion to take up late filed orders? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes. And that would be 54, 55, and 56? So item 54 was filed by counselors Devine and Jenny Rivera, who did, by the way, call me and say that she is very under the weather, so that's why she's not here. I apologize. for not letting you guys know. That the mayor issued an executive order temporarily suspending all fines related to 110.7 periodic inspection of the Massachusetts State Building Codes for a six-month period until all records have been completely reviewed by the building and law departments. Further ordered that all current fines already paid should be rescinded or held in escrow until all records have been reviewed by the building and law departments. Item 55 was filed by Counselor Bartley. That a moratorium be established granting Hoyoke's multifamily property owners, as defined by 780 CMR 110.7, as amended and effective October 10, or October 11, 2024, more time to come into compliance with the Mass State Building Code regulations. In terms of rollout, the city's building commission seems to have imposed an unrealistic two-month turnaround for the hundreds of property owners impacted. Note that the building commission, for unexplained reasons, admittedly dropped the ball on this regulation for decades. Thus, a moratorium of 18 to 36 months be established to allow property owners a realistic time to hire the appropriate professionals, make necessary improvements, and then contact the building commission for an inspection. During said moratorium, no fines shall accrue, and any fines previously imposed will be rescinded. Property owners are nevertheless obligated to complete their requirements and to timely respond to the building commissioner during this moratorium. For authority to create a moratorium, see MGL Chapter 143, Section 3, Subsection 3A. And item 56 was also filed by Counselor Bartley as a compendium, compendium, nice word, to the moratorium. An ad hoc committee comprised of representatives from the building commission and multifamily owners and the city council be immediately formed. The building committee shall be charged with effectively and efficiently implementing the certificate of inspection requirements and ensuring that it is more efficiently complied with after this initial rollout. Note that as properties change hands and staffing resources change and institutional memory fades, this committee will make sure that Hoyoke doesn't face a similar issue in the future. For authority to create an ad hoc committee, see Mass General Law, Chapter 143, Subsection 3, 3A.
Madam President, if it's okay, I would like to be added to those orders. If it's okay with the makers of the orders?
Of course.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt your motion.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good.
Does anyone oppose to being added to these orders? Maybe that's an easier?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just gonna say add everyone.
And do we, from the makers, do we have a recommended disposition? It sounds like perhaps 54 we could adopt tonight. Are you looking for the other two to go to committee?
53. See, I don't have that list.
It would be 54. That was correct. That's yours, Counselor Devine. Yep.
Okay, I would like to see that obviously go to the mayor, but a copy to go to public safety, because I believe Counselor Jordaine has an order already in public safety regarding this matter.
I do.
That was filed a few weeks ago. And I did talk to Counselor Jenny Rivera, and she will bring it up on October 24.
Oh, good.
I'll second that.
That can be, that would be my motion, that my order be put, given to the mayor and put into public safety.
Okay.
24th of October.
Okay. So for that motion?
Motion to adopt, send to the mayor.
Motion to adopt, send to the mayor.
Copy.
And a copy to public safety.
Yep.
Under discussion. Counselor, well, actually, I saw Counselor Givner first and then Counselor McGraw-Smith. Is your microphone working?
You got the green light on or?
The light is on. Can you use Counselor Greeney's? Thank you. Sharing is caring.
It's still not working.
It's still not working.
Oh.
How about Inspector Sullivan?
Counselor Sullivan? Ouch. Hello. That one's working great.
That one hurt.
Inspector Sullivan's works. Okay.
Oh, my God.
Thank you. I just wanted to also mention, I know, I know this ties into it. At the September 18 meeting, I also filed an order that was to be in service to property owners to create a fully transparent ordinance to help, like, bring the building department and code enforcement departments into creating policies that are transparent for the whole city, especially for property owners. And I filed that order before receiving my fine letter, because I own a four family. But I, I'm going through the same thing that all the property owners in this room are going through. And I've just been kind of working behind the scenes a little more. But I realize that it's a privilege to be able to work through this with the various departments and ask questions ongoing. And I know that it's creating a lot of stress and confusion for people. But I'm, I'm under the impression that the city is doing the most to understand the problem and really try to figure out where all the, where all the misfiring is happening. Because clearly. Oh, yours, okay, something is, but. We need new microphones. Because clearly, there's misfires all over the building. But I'm having the same, I'm going through the same thing. I got one letter at the beginning of the year. I filled it out, I didn't check with the building department. You know, I've done all the same things that I hear all of you doing. And I do have faith that we're gonna all come out on the other side of this without losing our homes. But I really feel like things are in motion. I think the orders that were filed tonight are excellent. And I really appreciate, you know, the counsel's advice. I hope those are immediate action because they're really important. Thank you. Thank you. I have Counselor McGraw-Smith and then Counselor Devine.
I'm grateful for the counselors who've been doing the legwork and the thinking around how best to respond. And I definitely want to support us responding. I have questions around 54. Because specifically, it says the current fines already paid should be rescinded or held in escrow. Those two options feel very different to me. And I would like us to have more conversation and say for the record which one we're looking for before we send this to the mayor. So for that purpose, I'd either like us to really hash that out tonight and potentially amend it, or push this to a committee where that conversation can occur and then bring it back here. Because I do think that those two options have huge impacts on people directly in terms of which one would happen.
Thank you. Counselor Devine and then Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I understand where Counselor McGraw-Smith is coming from. And I was trying to word it in such a way to, I mean, I think it would be great if all those fines could be just rescinded. But we don't know at this point who actually was in compliance, who ignored it, who wasn't in compliance, who got fined. And I know of people that did everything, everything according to what they were supposed to do. And they got their certificate. And sure enough, they got a letter that they were going to be fined. So they had to take care of it. And it was, the law department said, they're correct. There was, there shouldn't have been a fine. They're all set. So I, I understand where you're coming from. And I certainly have spoken to some of these people when on their Zoom. My heart breaks for you. I can't even imagine what I would go through if I was a multifamily owner. So we're gonna do, I'm gonna speak for everybody. We're gonna do whatever we can do to get this straightened out. And that's why I wanted to go to the mayor. That's why I used the language that I did, because there are some people that probably should be fined. I don't know. We won't know that until we hear from everybody. But please believe us when we say we're with you. Okay?
Thank you. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, so I'll just first make a motion for 55 and 56. Motion be received and adopted.
Oh, we are in the middle of 54. So if there's.
Right. But I can make a motion.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's okay with everyone. Yeah.
Let me get a second. That'd be great.
A second?
There a second?
Thank you. Just under discussion. So.
Yeah.
It's like, you'll notice, and I think all the orders are great. So let me say that. But in, in 55, I put a moratorium on this nonsense for 18 to 36 months. I originally said 18, but I spoke with the District 2 manager for the, for the building, the building secretary today. And she said, this is, I better not put words in her mouth, but she suggested 30, 36 months. That's why I put 18 to 36 months. Second off, Madam President, you'll notice that I said in, in, in the order, it said, during said moratorium, no fines shall accrue, and any fines previously imposed will be rescinded. I don't think we need to slice and dice who did what, when, and where. This was a horrible, horrible rollout. And it, well.
What's our order? Thank you.
To be truthful, I usually have people yelling at me, so I'm.
This is, yes, this is a nice change of pace here.
I'm grateful, I'm grateful that I'm not the target for a change. Yeah, exactly, Patty. Counselor Devine's more right than she knows. So, and if you'll, if you'll notice, I, so I said, everything should be just rescinded, go back to ground level here. And, and then I say, at the end, Madam President, just like I said in the other order, which I'll touch on every so briefly a minute, this is under Chapter 143, Sections 3 and 3A. Those are directed to me by the aforementioned District 2 manager, who, by the way, called me at 7:05 this morning. I didn't answer the phone, and she called again at 7:08, so I answered it. And then she told me after this, after she went through it, that she was gonna have the exact same conversation with the mayor. Now, I don't know whether we heard the mayor or not, but she, knowing her, she was, she was no joke. So, so she absolutely called the mayor. I'm positive of that. So, these can be rolled out, and these can be taken up tonight. Now, I don't want to do that because it's unfair to this body who hasn't studied this stuff. And so I'm gonna see if my orders can go both to ordinance committee. So, just a second one. This is in touch with one of my, at the suggestion of one of my constituents, who spoke earlier tonight. And the person said, you know, look, we, we should have a group, an ad hoc group, get together and work with the building commissioner and the mayor, and whomever else is imposing this. And I'm positive that this person from, from Boston would, would like to have input. So, I mean, I'd love to see this stuff just sort of halted by the building. And it says very clearly in the law, it's, I mean, I downloaded the laws, we're not gonna go through it now. But the, the building department in Holyoke has tremendous discretion pursuant to the mass regulations and the state law to stop all this. And by the way, it can't be emphasized enough, they're the ones that dropped the ball for the last 30 or 40 years. And I put that right in my order. They dropped the ball. I don't care how good they were. They never filed up on this. And now we have a building commissioner who was serving ably. Now, now the gentleman's moved on. Because, and we're gonna see that coming up in, in an order. I mean, I'm pretty sure that this had something to do with it. So, I guess, you know, my motion is for right now, just, just to take these two, 55 and 56, send them to ordinance committee, where we can, hopefully, the law department can, can look at one, Chapter 143 and the, and the building code, 780 CMR, et cetera. Give us some feedback, and maybe we in fact can come up with something in ordinance to sort of put a, put a halt to this temporarily.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
That is sent to the ordinance, yes.
Second.
I, I see Attorney Mantlewski has her hand up.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? I was waiting for a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Attorney Mantlewski?
Thank you. So I just wanted to speak briefly on this, that even when this had all happened, and we were getting, the law department was getting a lot of correspondence from property owners last week. The, it was incredible, just so everybody knows, it was incredibly overwhelming. It was a lot going on. So, we did already speak with the building department and ask that no other letters go out. I know about half of the properties that are on the list did go out. And we asked that those stop so we can get more of a handle as to what's going on. And we also did, to the extent that we, we have been able to, we have been, as I believe Charlene Robinson spoke, she, we have been waving to the extent that we can. So if, yes, you're welcome. So to the extent that I haven't met you, which I have, some people, my email is on the website. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have questions as to the status. Most importantly, keep in communicate, all I can say is keep in communication with the building department. And now that the law department is involved too, we're overseeing, hopefully, a lot of like, where this is going. So, please just reach, keep in communication with the building department. If your certificate of inspection has issued, please, yeah, come to me about any sort of fines in a letter. So please come to me about that. So, but we are working diligently and trying, I can tell you for the last week and a half, this has been my life. So if there's, there's not an order out there somewhere, counselors, I'm sorry, because I've been dealing with this. So just reach out to building department if you don't have your certificate of inspection. If you do, work with, reach out to me regarding any fines. But yes, the, not a moratorium, but the halt has already happened, which I think is, is good. But I think also, any sort of discussion would certainly be helpful, right, between property owners and the city to make sure everything goes smoothly and is in a better place. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Jordaine.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just a few comments. One, I want to thank all the homeowners and property owners for coming this evening. Thank you to my colleagues for filing these very thoughtful orders to, to look out for these folks. I, the first thing is, I know I was getting calls, like I'm sure a lot of you were, from just, you know, regular folks that we, we know that are very, I mean, the, the pillars of the community, responsible people who, who look after their property and just could not believe that Hoyoke treats people this way. And that, I think, is one of the things that will leave a wound here, that, you know, how is it that we operate this government? It's your government. This is not we talking down to you. This is your government. And, and when, when I see government, not on the side of regular people, that really bothers me. So, we'll get this figured out. I would only remind everyone, once again, it only emphasizes why we have a Hoyoke City Council. Okay? Checks and balances from an overbearing government. We have luckily the authority ultimately to make this right. And I would encourage the president to invite the mayor in. I would like to hear a statement from the mayor on his perspective on what is going on, why, why are they treating people in this way? And what, what is the end game with levying these people with all these fines? And so I always was under the impression that this was about safety, and that we wanted people to make repairs and to do right by tenants and make sure everyone's safe, not to drill people into the ground. And, I mean, it's very difficult to get craftspeople to, to do the work, the licensed professionals and otherwise. And I think it would be nice if we could have the mayor address the city council to give us a briefing on this issue because, as they stated, this affects hundreds and hundreds of people in the city. And they're just wondering now, they're left either worried about their property, worried about paying thousands in fines, just worried even going forward, like, what does this even mean? Like, what kind of government are we operating here in Hoyoke? So, we, there's some real takeaways from this. And I think we have some customer service skills. We're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and revisit how we treat people. Thank you.
Thank you. And to just, to also just be clear, the mayor's invited to every city council meeting.
Good point.
And that's also why we have subcommittee meetings, so that we'll make sure that the mayor is invited and that it's on his calendar. Thank you. Attorney Mantlewski, you had something to add?
Yeah, just real quick, and thank you, Counselor Jordaine, because you reminded me. I actually did speak with the mayor today about this meeting tonight. And yes, absolutely, above all, safety. And he brought up a very interesting point to me, or a thing that he said, which I never really, I guess, like, contemplated. Because we all think generally, you know, the, the larger apartment buildings, yes, you need the, the fire, all the fire safety, the sprinklers, the exit signage, egress, everything like that. But he brought up a good point. And he said, you know, have you ever been, or have you ever been a tenant in, on a? have you ever been a tenant in, on a top floor of a three family in a fire and trying to get out and make sure you find your way out? And I have not. So, I could not, um, uh, really, um, think about that. But prior to that statement, and then I was like, oh, like, I would be scared to death, you know, how am I gonna get out? So, I think in the end, I don't think the po- not, I don't think, I know the point was never to have it be a money grab and I know it feels that way and I can understand how it can feel that way. But again, we have to think of all residents of the city, including our renters and our tenants that live in, because we have so many multiple, multi-families, right? We have so many three families, four families, that we wanna make sure everybody is protected. So, the mayor really wanted to bring home that idea of safety. And yes, this is the first time in however many years that it's been going on and, or that the enforcement has gotten to the level it has. And no excuses, but there's, when new things or things come back, there's growing pains, which is why we're all trying to work with you and try to waive fees when we can, get updated, um, grace periods if you can. So, I think, you know, this will get to a place where, um, it's, everybody's in a better spot, both for safety and fine-wise. It's just we're in a hard spot right now. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that the, the mayor, he had to be at a joint, or a, a school committee meeting tonight. But he did, most certainly, he hears everybody, he's, he's al- already talked to me about a potential, um, pause or time period of a year, um, to get things, uh, worked out. So, we're, we're getting through that progress and I'm sure the mayor will be happy to sit down also with other people, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Madam President, just on, on the motions?
Okay, so, yes, um, on the motions, uh, we are, we're done with public comment. I apologize, we're, we're gonna keep moving forward. Everyone can, public comment is, happened and everyone had the opportunity and I appreciate everyone being here. We're going to keep moving forward because we're trying to move this meeting forward. Things are gonna get referred to committee. The motions were that Counselor Devine's order, item 54, would be referred to the mayor, received, sent to the mayor and a copy to public safety. And, uh, Counselor Bartley's orders, uh, 55 and 56 would be, uh, sent to ordinance.
Right to ordinance.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And we'll be sure, you know, uh, the, the next public safety meeting, the date and everything will be on the city's website. And we can, as councilors, make sure that you all know when that, when that is happening. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, now we have, let me just.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good seeing you, Mark. Yeah, take care, buddy. Take care now, have a good night.
Am I cold?
Madam President, should we, should I make a motion to take a five-minute break? I don't want to, but I guess, I mean, no, I think, I think it's okay. Thanks, everyone. Um, I just did hear that, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to notify, uh, Holyoke Media that some folks are having issues with the microphone.
It's working now.
Oh, okay.
Loose cord.
Great.
Can we have a motion just for a two-minute?
Sure. Is there a motion for that? All those, we're gonna take a four-minute, we'll start at eight.
Okay.
Does that sound great? All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you, thank you. Well, and I knew that yours was already in there, so that's, I figured that's the best place to go, so. You got a lot of steps since then. Oh, God bless you, bless you. Hey, Dave? Dave, maybe the thermostat? Oh, okay. 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 Well, then we just talk fast.
So, FYI, I was told last week when it was freezing that they don't turn on the boiler till November 1st.
Wow. Good point.
Do you have enough to share with everyone?
There's more in the kitchen.
We'll get started in just a minute, folks.
Not for this October.
For the.
Next, for the spring?
For the spring.
Okay, so.
Where does it go then? That order, does it go to public? Who handles those?
So, DPW installs them. But if they were already approved and it was a matter of money, then the mayor usually puts the money in the budget.
I'm not even sure they were, you know what I'm saying?
So, I was, because there's been so much turnover in DPW. But you have the paperwork that shows it was approved.
So, what Jeffrey sent me was that there was basically no sense of what had actually happened. We don't have any meeting recordings from back then. And that there didn't, and all DPW, it was done and it showed it was recommended.
Well, that's all you need. Where is that? No, 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 but if, but if that exists, I mean.
All right, I'm hoping we can get started soon, guys.
Okay, so what I would do is I would file an order that based on the engineering recommendation of LA, that the speed pumps as approved be installed during the paving project.
Just for fun.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so that's, that's right. Oh, so. It would have to go.
There is an alarm.
They would be the one installing it. But it's probably also gonna have to go to the mayor, 'cause he's gonna have to find the money. Because I don't think they have it on the list. They haven't done the ones on upland. They haven't even done the temporary ones. So, see what Kevin thinks, but I would say, I would say DPW and the mayor. For 41. I think it's ridiculous that's in executive session, it should be public information. But we can, and that's up to us, you know? That's up to us, whether it be made public.
All righty. Welcome back. We're gonna get started. And I'll let folks join in the ready, but we're gonna get started. Um, so we are now on item two. Do we wanna do anything with this?
Nope.
Sure.
Item two, send to finance.
We just had a, a motion to leave it on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item, thank you. Item three.
Receive, refer to public service.
Second.
Let me just read it. Um, item three is from the mayor, a letter appointing, uh, Mr. Jose Maldonado Velez of 75 Linden Street to serve as a commissioner on the housing authority. And that was referred to public safety?
Service.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, public service, thank you. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley?
I would just like to make a friendly amendment, only to say if, I would have no problem suspending the rules and just appointing him forthwith because they're, they're down a commissioner. And it's not like we haven't heard from him and, well, we hear from him a lot. Now, I, I don't know what we're gonna gain out of, uh, hearing more from him, but, but if there's one coun- if there's any one counselor that objects to that, I.
I object.
Okay, then there you go.
Okay, sounds good.
Save your time.
There we go. So, we will refer to public service, uh, Counselor.
Nothing personal, I just like to, it's an important position.
Counselor Rivera?
I was, I was going to object, but I didn't have enough time just 'cause I spoke, uh, myself to Counselor Maldonado Velez earlier and he didn't want it to pass first, he wanted to come in and be able to talk to people, which is that way, fair process.
Great. So, refer to public service, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item four is from the mayor, it's a letter appointing, uh, Ms. Leslie Ward of 356 Springfield Street, um, to serve as the interim building commissioner.
Received.
Motion to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five is another letter from the mayor, uh, regarding to grants.
Send to finance.
Uh, receive, 'cause they're actually on the agenda for tonight, right Patty?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll explain when finance comes up.
Okay, so receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, item six is the minutes from the, um, October 1st meeting.
Received.
Second.
Received.
And approved.
And a, and approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seven and eight, make a motion to receive, send a copy to the mayor on both.
Second.
Uh, motion to receive, uh, seven and eight, suspend the rules and take seven and eight as a package and receive incentive finance, did you say?
No, just a copy to the mayor, he, he requested them, so.
So, okay, um, let's see, seven is from attorney, uh, Assistant City Solicitor Jane Mantuleski, um, a legal opinion regarding city council meetings. And, um, item eight is from Assistant City Solicitor, uh, Michael Bissonnet, legal opinion regarding financial transfer. And that is to receive and, that's it?
Send to the mayor.
Send to the mayor, copy to the mayor. Okay, Counselor Devine, did you have something to add?
Question, is there, um, and again, I don't have the full agenda that other people have, but, um, is there a late filed order?
There is a late file.
Dealing with this. And if there is, if you could read that and perhaps these could also be sent to wherever that should go.
So, there's a late file, um, item, agenda item 57.
Which is now on the even newer.
Even newer, yes, this was filed today. And we can refer it to finance. This is the, uh, transfer filed by Counselor Devine, um, for $108, uh, 108,695 dollars from canvas stabilization to the solicitor claims and damages.
We could send that to finance?
Sure. So.
Motion to suspend the rules to, uh, receive that late file and send it to finance.
Second.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to, um, suspend the rules, take up these items and, uh, take the late file up and send to finance.
And if I could, uh, copies of seven and eight in, with that late file to finance.
Okay.
We'll have it in there.
So, seven and eight copies of these letters also sent to finance and sent to the mayor. Counselor Bartley?
Just a point, I know one of your suspension rules, are, are we allowed to, to, to comment on, on that, uh, that financial transfer? Because we're, we, we suspended the rules to take final action, so I thought we could comment on it.
I mean.
Not really.
That's all I wanna know, if we, I don't wanna.
We're sending it to finance.
Well, I don't wanna belabor it, it's, it's all good.
Okay, I mean, I think we can discuss things, uh, appropriately in executive session if we need to. Again, uh, for what it's worth, I learned a lot from this whole experience. And I went back and I'm, I'm not entering into debate, I'm just saying that, um, to be crystal clear, I, I, I went back and watched the last meeting and, um, a counselor asked me if, uh, we were on the first or second reading. We were on the second reading, but I said the first and that is what happened. And so, going forward, now I know, I will never make that mistake ever again. And, uh, you know, there's other ways that this could have gone tonight, but I recognize everyone's time and, and, and I also recognize that, um, this is an important discussion that we should be having. So, instead of belaboring it, I would just like us to refer it to finance. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay. We are on item, um, ten, nine, nine, thank you. Filed by myself, uh, this is the fall 2025 paving update. I'm, I kinda just wanted to make sure that the public knew, so I'm okay with receiving it unless anyone wants to send it to the committee.
Received.
Okay. Receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, item 10 is filed by, um, our clerk, uh, or actually, sorry, our administrative assistant. Executive session minutes of September 4th. And these, these will be released following, uh, review at a future executive session. So, motions to receive, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Counselor Bartley?
So, I, just, on, on this September 4th executive session, have they been released to the public yet?
No.
No, we have to, um, we'll, we'll, we will release them after. No, we have to, um, we'll, we'll, we will release them after they've been, um, reviewed at a future executive session.
Okay, thanks for clarification, appreciate it.
No problem. Um, item eleven is from the city auditor, uh, Hoyoke's revenue expenses, um, uh, fund budget versus actual. What would you like to do?
You receive incentive finance, Kevin?
Yeah, that sounds good, um, I was just gonna ask, are we receiving an electronic version of those to email around? I just wanted to double check.
I believe so.
Are we?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that it was there.
Yep, in your packet. Okay, so, uh, receive and said to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, reports of committees.
President's report, no?
Oh, wait.
Thank you, Counselor. I got a couple updates for ya. Okay. Um, just a reminder, um, Friday is the mayor's volleyball Hall of Fame reception. Um, if you haven't already RSVP'd, please let Anoka know as soon as possible. Um, and, uh, there's an order that I filed this evening, but, um, just a reminder that we will not have, uh, a meeting on the first Tuesday of November due to the, um, election day. Um, I filed an order to have it on Thursday, November seventh, as much as I don't love Thursday meetings, we gotta, sometimes we gotta suck it up and do it. Um, but I talked to the city clerk and just knowing that, how much they have going on, um, getting ready for the election and everything, we were, um, hoping that folks could still stick to that, um, Friday deadline before the meeting, so that would be Friday, November first at noon. Um, just to make sure that everything gets submitted on time and, and doesn't get lost. Um, the, as another reminder, the tax classification hearing is gonna be November sixth. And just to let folks know, we're looking at the week of, um, November nineteenth, twenty, maybe the twenty-first, twenty-second, um, to set the tax rate, because we have to do it by the first week of December, and we're gonna try to get it done before Thanksgiving. Um, of course, there's so many different factors that we're still waiting for, so that might not happen, but just trying to keep that on folks' radar. Um, and anyone else have anything they wanna add, Councilor Bartley and then Councilor Jordan?
Very quickly, I, I just wanna say that there's two volleyballs, one in the back room and one here. Uh, Jeff, myself and Councilor Anderson Burgos, we're, we're going to present them to the Volleyball Hall of Fame on Friday night.
Nice.
And cuz they're all autographed by the, by the Hall of Famers from those two years. And then Jeff, Juan and myself, we will get another volleyball, we'll have a presentation at the first meeting, get all the autographs, and we'll, we'll replace it, um, so that's our little tradition we came up with, uh, a few years ago, so I'm looking forward to doing that. And who's gonna refuse those two guys when they get, get autographs? So, we'll, we'll, it'll be kinda fun, and I look forward to the evening.
Nice, thank you, it's always a good evening, Councilor Jordan.
Just something to consider on the tax classification vote part, I mean, we could, you know, we do have, uh, the third Tuesday as our regular meeting, something for you to consider, you know, that's gonna be that same week.
Yeah.
We don't have to have a sec- a separate meeting, um, depending on how long that'll go.
I know, that's what always makes me nervous, but.
Yeah.
We could, we could do it.
Yeah, it hasn't gone as long as we would expect it in.
Yeah.
Recent years, so something to consider.
For sure, thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Rivera, did you say? Oh, sorry. I know, I'll try to get this meeting over soon, so you're not all freezing.
Copy it up.
It builds character, guys.
Yes.
The heat is not on at my house.
Madam President?
Yes.
The Paper City Food Festival is this weekend.
I knew I was forgetting something, there's so much happening on Saturday.
And the brick race.
The brick race, the Paper City Food Festival.
And doors open.
Doors open, Hoyoke.
Magic for Matty.
Magic for Matty, um.
Car show.
What's that?
Car show on Ray Street.
The car show on Ray Street.
Stop it.
Um, yep, and there's a lot of really, there's just a lot of really great things happening on Saturday. So thank you to all the awesome, awesome humans that help plan all of these fun things for us to do. And if, uh, I encourage everyone, I will be there all weekend, so just come hang out with me, it'll be really fun. Um, great. Explore Hoyoke, like, check out the website, you can follow them on social media, there we go. Thank you, Councilor Givner.
Jeff puts them on the website too.
Yes.
Still do.
They're everywhere, I, they're everywhere. Um, alright, cool, so now we're gonna head into reports of committees. Alright, the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that our ordinance, uh, that requires sinks in certain establishments such as tattoo parlors, uh, uh, be connected to city water, be modified to allow for portable sinks as an option. Recommended that the Board of Health recommendation be accepted, that portable sinks are not allowed. Councilor Rivera?
Uh, thank you, this order was filed by Councilor Vacan, I believe on behalf of a constituent. Um, the Board of Health Director came in, um, he explained that he kinda went and visited the space, um, and that others have tried something similar to this, and that he ended up reaching out to the State Department, um, about this issue. And technically, it's, it's not, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Vacan, but like, to my understanding was, you go to the bathroom to wash your hands, it's different than when you wash your hands in the kitchen. So if you wash your hands in the bathroom, when you're a, a cook, right, for example, then when you go to cook, you actually will wash your hands again before you cook, that's the intention. So like, with the portable, the portable sink, it kind of like, it's like a workaround or a middle, and it's not as safe as it would be if you actually had the actual sink present there. So with that, um, the Board of Health, um, did not recommend that we had make an amendment to the, to our ordinance. Um, but, um, Councilor Vacan is the maker of the order, so if you would like to add or, or speak on it.
I'm all set, you summarized it.
Perfect.
Perfectly.
I'm proud of myself, thank you.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, famous podcast now, um.
It is.
Uh, so I guess on the, 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 on the mo- what, not the motion.
So the motion, was this to pass the first reading?
No. No.
No.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, no, we're not doing that, right?
We're just not doing it, great.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, great. So, uh, a motion to approve the committee's recommendation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, thank you. Um, item thirteen was, uh.
Want to take thirteen?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, thank you, Counselor, does, alright, so, uh, motion to suspend the rules and take items thirteen and fourteen as a package?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So item thirteen is, um, uh, an order that a handicap parking sign be installed at ninety-five Newton Street. And then, um, item fourteen is, um, a handicap, uh, parking spot installed in front of fifty-six Moser Street. Um, recommended that both orders be adopted, Councilor Rivera?
Yes, uh, both, uh, or, both orders were, or requests were reviewed by the, um, Disabilities Commission, um, and they have recommended that the, that they can actually get the spots, um, where they requested them, so we recommend that the order be adopted, so, I think.
First reading.
Yeah, so I, I was gonna say, so, um, motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Okay, motion is to pass the first reading, any other discussion?
Motion.
Okay, all those in, oh, go ahead. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get me out of my, sorry.
It's my bad. Um, motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting to approve these two handicap pocket installations. Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? Oh, I forgot she's out, Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grani? Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed, thank you very much. Um, item fifteen is the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the DPW put a handicap parking space in front of four twenty Dwight Street. Uh, recommended that the order has been complied with, Councilor Rivera?
Yes, um, so this order was filed by Councilor Devine, uh, apparent, um, my understanding is that, um, the, there was a, a park, uh, handicap pa- space requested for a sp- particular spot on Dwight Street, but they actually put it on the opposite side of the street. Um, I just drove by the other day, and, um, I actually saw them repainting, and they've already.
It's already been done, yeah.
They've already taken care of it, and they've handled it, so this order is recommended that it's complied with.
Thank you, DPW.
Awesome, great, um, recommended that the order's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, DPW, um, okay. Item sixteen, the Committee on Ordinance, uh, to whom was referred an order that the Police Department be allowed to hire a crime analyst past the grade ten mid-range, which is seventy thousand dollars, four hundred seven, to seventy-eight thousand dollars. Recommended that the order be adopted, Councilor Rivera?
So this order passed, I believe, two, one, cuz that Councilor Bartley had already stepped out. Um, Councilor Vacan voted down, voted, voted nay, I would say, I don't wanna say it in a negative way. And, uh, myself and, uh, I believe it was Councilor McGrath Smith voted yes, to pass this order. This order was filed by Councilor Murphy Rumbelletti or the President, um, Madam President, um, and this was on behalf of HR. Um, ideally, um, when we first came up with the criminal analyst position, we had a, a range set forth. Um, uh, apparently, the person that was hired for the position was offered a range a little higher than it was set as the, the bottom range, she was offered somewhere in the mid-range, um, a little bit past the mid-range. Um, the, the max range is eighty-two thousand, what they offered her was seventy-eight thousand. She comes with extensive experience from Springfield, she's been doing the job for quite some time in collaboration, um, with Mayor Sarno and the department out there, he actually wrote a letter of recommendation for her, her resume is extensive. Um, this is what she's been doing, um, we, um, it's, we are asking to see if it's possible to, to, to grant this, because, um, she's already started and has been doing the work. She's actually, and at the ordinance committee, she actually sent us a letter, uh, explaining and outlining a lot of the work that she has already been doing. Um, a lot of it seems like, um, it's gonna be more strategic planning and, and also getting in line with some of the things, cuz this is the first time we have a crime analyst, um, and we're bringing someone in that has experience in a different realm doing it. Um, so, we've been asked, uh, and I, this is from what I heard from the HR department, um, to, to try to keep the employee to stay with us, um, cuz this is what she was offered, ex- I wanna say accidentally, um, cuz it wasn't through the HR department, it was actually the Police Department's, um, hiring team that kinda did this process. Um, so it kind of, something misfired, to use terminology from earlier, um, in, in our process. So we're trying to rectify the situation, um, in a way where it makes sense for the employee, I guess. Um, so, uh, I would ask that we adopt this order if possible, um, and Madam President, I guess you would say under discussion, or motion to pass the first reading, which one goes first?
You can do motion to pass the first reading, and then we can do under discussion.
Motion to pass the first reading, then.
Second.
Second.
Uh, so the motion's to pass the first reading, under discussion?
Yeah, thank you, um, Madam President, so I'll try to be brief, but, um, the, the chairman does a very nice job trying to put as positive a spin on this situation as one can, um, it's a very difficult situation, very, this had a range, I wanna say mid-fifties to low eighties. People know the rules, apparently not enough people know the rules, you're not allowed to give beyond the midpoint. And by the way, the midpoint was the seventy thousand, that was put in the budget. In fairness to those of us who may be voting against this momentarily, I voted to set it to zero. You know, the tax levy went up three million dollars, and some things have to cut, and some things had to be cut. But the vote was seven to six to cut this position, uh, in light of the tax levy, so in fairness, I voted to set it to zero, okay, a couple months ago. I'm certainly not now gonna now vote to give it a twelve percent increase, alright? So, um, it's really a shame that, I'm sure she's a lovely person, nobody should've promised her more than legally they were allowed to offer her. It does raise the problem too, is if you're coming in almost at the top of the range, I mean, the max, like he stated, I believe that is accurate. The, the top of the max is like eighty-two, and if you're already at seventy-eight, where is this person ever gonna get a pay raise? They're gonna be, it's just gonna create a bad situation, so, so what you'll get a year from now is, uh, Mrs., you know, so-and-so, this wonderful person is doing this amazing job, and now you need to add another five, six, seven thousand dollars so she can get a raise, because she's wonderful and we didn't, we have to do the right thing. And this is just how we get going with more and more and more money. And bottom line is, if we had a levy that was reasonable, with tax increases that are reasonable, people are gonna get whacked massively in January. Hold on to your envelopes, because there's a tax levy coming to the people of Hoyoke very soon. And that's why we, some of us were trying to dial back the budget a bit. And this unfortunately would be someday hopefully nice to have, but it's not a, we can have with a three million dollar tax increase, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson Burgos?
Thank you, Madam President, so, when I look at this, this position, I also look at the city as a whole and the high crime rates. And sometimes, when I see, in my household, when I spend money, I have to see an investment. And when I, when I sit here and we decide how we're gonna spend the money the city has or does not have, in this regards, is to look deeper into why our crime rate is so high. We can't keep, we keep getting more officers, more officers, more officers, that's gonna cost a lot more than seventy-eight thousand dollars. We keep getting, are we supposed to get more officers as the high crime rate goes up? Think about it, this is a lot less than getting more officers. This is a smart move, this is to take a deep look and uncover, why is the crime rate in this city so high? We have to have a stop, we have to have someone who has a critical eye that will help us address this high crime rate in the city. I don't think the taxpayer would want to be dealing with their cars broken into, their homes broken into, being mugged out in the street, so on and so forth, I mean, the, this is why this is important. And, I mean, it's my opinion, there's twelve other people on here that, that have to make this decision, but this is how I see it, thank you.
Thank you, I have Councilor Vacan and then Councilor Rivera, and then Councilor Givner.
Thank you, so I'll just give my minority report. Um, I come at this from a similar perspective to Councilor Jordan. We very recently came out of the budget process, the position only made it into the budget at a max salary of seventy thousand, four hundred seven by one vote. And now to be looking at bringing somebody in this high for a position that when I'm hearing from constituents day after day that they want our current police department to enforce the laws we have, and they feel pretty clear about the ones they want to see enforced. And it seems like we're spending more and more money and calling it investments, where we just keep studying things, but nothing changes. So I just don't see this as an effective use of the taxpayers' money, which is already, um, being felt as very heavy weight by many in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Rivera?
Thank you, um, so, to, to all the points around finance and, 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 and it being a burden, and even the investment piece, it, it, I, 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 I hear all of it, and, and I kinda side with every piece of it. But I think that for us as a council, it's not, it is to protect the taxpayers' dollars and be in the best interest of what our constituents are, uh, are looking for, for, not today and, and tomorrow, but also the future. But, um, the, there's a piece here where for me, that this lies within the budget of the chief, right? So if we were to move it to seventy-eight thousand, that's not us increasing the police budget, that's him having to find the other eight thousand within his budget. So it's not adding more to the budget, in a sense, right?
Next year.
Council Vacan, I'm sorry, but when you were talking, I didn't talk?
Yeah.
I appreciate that though, thank you for the suggestion. But, um, even then, I, next year, I would not allow the increase, right? Us as a council doesn't necessarily have to allow the increase, that's for him to play with, maybe he doesn't have an extra eight thousand dollars in overtime dollars. Maybe he doesn't have an extra eight thousand dollars in overtime dollars. That, I think, there's a, there's a way to actually hash this out within their budget and make it happen. I don't disagree with a lot of the points brought up. My taxes are going up. I own a home, too, with my wife. Prices are going up. I'm scared in the winter seasons, because my light bill and gas bill comes to like eight hundred, nine hundred dollars, and I no longer have subsidies. I grew up on subsidies. Trust me, it's a different world. But to say that this is not something we can't do within the budget that they already have, that would be hard pressed for me to believe that. Now, long-term, right, if we're going to map it out and plan it out, I think for us, it's, we got the Public Safety Committee or whomever is working in collaboration with the chief and seeing where this investment really lies. I, too, was taken aback when it first came to me. I'm like, yo, we voted at seventy thousand, why we're going to bring it up? I agree with that. But then, in looking at the budget and understanding how the budget is played with, this is a position that is a regular citizen position, not a cop position, where they get the overtime, they get the significant benefits. This is what we're trying to move to. This is what was recommended in the audit, right? So for us, it's holding our department accountable to then, maybe next year, take off a couple more cops and actually put them on the street and reallocate funding to hire different citizens in different positions that are citizen positions. We do still have police officers, and I'm not coming at police and nothing like that. I'm just saying that that's what the audit says, and if we're going to talk about effective and efficient government, this is part of it when we're talking about our own Police Department. That's all I wanted to say. If you guys vote for it, great. If you don't, also great. It's not my job. Like, I'm trying to advocate for it. I wish the best for this person and I wish the best for our city and our department, too, as well, because we mentioned something about the summer or somebody did, crime and all that. I lost a friend over the summer over the crime. I'm not, I'm not here doing none of this stuff about that. But in reality, this is, this is real-life stuff that we're dealing with on a regular basis. And for me is, how, how are we dealing with it in the future and how are we trying to mitigate the impacts on our children that are growing up in these communities? But that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
I have Counselor Givner and then Counselor McGrath Smith and then Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. So it was already brought up, but when I, when I think about this position, I mostly think about the audit. And I think about being on the Public Safety Subcommittee in my last term and how many times Chief Pratt came in front of us and told us that he didn't have the information we wanted because he didn't have a crime analyst. There were so many reports we asked for, but we didn't have a crime analyst. We never got the reports. We were always told that there was not enough time in the day or not enough resources in the department or not the proper equipment or the right spreadsheet or any of that stuff because he didn't have a crime analyst. He needed a crime analyst to analyze the data so that he could better use the police resources and put them in the places where they could best be used and create a more efficient department. So I don't agree with necessarily raising this amount since it was already in the budget at seventy thousand, but I do understand that this is a needed position in our city. I live in Ward Four. There's all kinds of things going on that shouldn't be. And I feel like if we had a crime analyst, they could pinpoint all the problems and get the reports to the places they need to go so that officers know exactly what needs to be done to tackle these issues. It was suggested in the audit that we also spent money on. So if we're going to spend money to study things, we should probably take them seriously enough to take the suggestions and implement the solutions. And so I think we should vote for this. Of course, I'm, I will support this because I think this is a really necessary position. And living in Ward Four, I think, you know, I see so much daily and I know my community really needs this kind of position in the Police Department. But I can't stress enough how many times Chief Pratt said that he didn't have the data, he didn't have a report because he didn't have a crime analyst. And then the audit said we needed one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath Smith and then Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you. I wanted to name one piece around how we developed this position because I was on the committee when we set the range. And when we initially set the range, I also did research going into this, the comparable, you know, urban environment that I would look to in our area, which was Springfield. And we looked at how much they paid their crime analysts. And so when we looked at the original range, it made sense based on what we were initially looking at in terms of the job postings that Springfield was putting out. The thing that I did not understand is that Springfield does not just have one, they have a team. And so because they have three and they're sharing a load together, they are able to split the responsibilities mindfully between those three positions. And they're all paid at the range of what we are asking this one person to do. I think we should be grateful for the fact that we attracted a really good candidate. And I think we have to stop looking a gift horse in the mouth because we keep doing it. We need to have taken a leap on good candidates when we have them. She is coming in with so much experience. Her resume, if you look at it, she is every industry-specific system that we would have paid to train someone to have. She's not coming in with a little bit of experience or even mid-range experience, but we're looking for, she's coming in of what we want. I think we should be grateful for the experience because we don't, we've never had this role before. This is new. It's important that we have the right person in this role who can define it, who can create a position where they are able to create reports and respond to us and also respond to the Police Department to give us the accountability that we require, that we absolutely should be able to require versus hearing again and again, oh, sorry, can't get that to you because you haven't given us the resources we require. The reality is that I think that we got the range wrong. I do. And maybe at some point, we may need to go back in and look at the range, but we did it based on a misunderstanding that I own, that I had around what this role was when we looked at comparable roles from Springfield to us. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you. So I was against having a new position created as well. To hear the chief say that we needed an analyst when we have, one of the things, one of the budget cuts, I hope everybody remembers I proposed, was not to have four captains. We've got captains that are in there with master's degrees. We're overstaffed, but there was no one that could do crime analyst on our current staff. The only reason I'm even considering this right now is because a person left another job and came to the city with a promise of something and left that job. That's the only reason. We did not need to hire another person. What we need this council to do in the next round, when the budgets come around, is to take a serious look at line item by line item by line item, what's on there and make the necessary cuts. Last year, what I saw was very disturbing. Almost no cuts at all. I think it was under a hundred thousand dollars. I've never seen anything like that in the history of this city. This is the last time that I will ever go for something like this if we go through another round like that. We have tax classification hearings coming up. I hope everybody's paying attention and takes serious, serious consideration. Line item by line item and do their homework of what's going to be proposed in the next budget.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley and then Counselor Jordaine.
I'm just going to say, thank you, Mike. I agree with everything Mike said. That would be the only reason I would consider it, frankly. It's because the person's in a job and she's a good person, but, you know, Madam President, what Counselor Sullivan said is absolutely correct, except, let me just go one deeper. There was serious debate as to whether we were going to even go through the budget. Yourself and several other counselors wanted to pass it on the floor as is.
Myself, sir, Counselor? Let's focus on.
Am I wrong?
I, I am up here facilitating a meeting. I'm not pushing for anything.
At the time of the budget hearing.
What, okay, keep going.
Your vote, several other counselors.
Got it.
What was? No review whatsoever of the budget. None. Just, and it was a seven to six vote. I mean, you know, you took the vote and others took the vote, too. So you can smile or smirk at me all you want, but you took the vote, you took. Fortunately, it was seven to six and we did, we did go through it line by line. Line by line, we went through it. Now, I just had somebody across the room yell at a fellow counselor for talking.
He didn't yell, actually. Counselor, he did not yell. Please, please, please.
Talking while, while somebody was talking.
Guys, you're all kind of guilty of it, so why don't we just keep going forward? Everyone, everyone, see? Everyone's guilty of it, everyone. Doesn't matter. Everyone is. Please continue.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I heard what Mike said. I hope that some of that, some of that lands relative to the budget. It was unbelievable that we almost just passed on the floor as it is, never, completely unprecedented. Fortunately, we went through it and I thought we did as good of a job as we could. So I disagree slightly with Mike on that one, but I think, seeing what we have, we did an okay job. But the main point is, this, contrary to what prior speakers have said, this budget item, which I voted against, was thought about for months and months beforehand. So now you're telling me we got to bail out, we got to bail out the mayor's office because the mayor, for months leading up to the budget, didn't put in the right amount? And then has the audacity to go ahead and hire somebody at an amount that is not legally authorized? And now you're coming back here, despite the good intentions, the wonderful employees in the place, the need for it pursuant to the, to the, to the report? Now you're saying, you know, you're making another argument? I mean, talk about literally moving the goalposts. The mayor has the budget going back in March and April. He set the amount with the HR director at seventy thousand and change. And now you want to come back and say, because we got somebody great and the mayor illegally hired this person at a higher amount, then that's okay? I would just say, I'm going to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Jordaine?
Yeah. I won't get into who voted what way, but on just that piece, just for a moment, since it did come up. I mean, this is a classic example of, it's like, oh, don't worry, you know, we'll go through the budget very diligently, but yet, we had to thank God for Counselor Givner. If she didn't vote, we would have had, not even been allowed to go through the budget this past budget cycle. So this notion that we're going to go through cut by cut and go through the Police Department budget and we'll find the money and all of that, you know, this is the concern, is that that's really not going to happen because what's the track record? The track record of this council is basically, don't cut. And we didn't even have the ability, almost unprecedentedly, to even be allowed to offer amendments. So that, that is very concerning. I would ask people to reflect on that again, just procedurally. Is that a good idea? Do we really want to do that in the future? Maybe that's a learning moment for all of us. But back on this particular item, I am concerned when I hear things of, you know, as staunch of a supporter as I am of this Police Department in the job that they do, the incredibly difficult job that they do. There is also the argument, hold on a minute, aren't all the people at the top making two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year? And then, we don't, we've never had a crime analyst position in the history of the Hoyle Police Department. And for some miraculous ability, we've been able to arrest people and deploy resources. Why? Because we're paying people at the top these enormous salaries to know what the hell they're doing. And yet, we're told we need an analyst to come in to know where to deploy police? Well, what am I paying you a quarter of a million dollars to do? And the top lieutenants to pay a quarter of a million dollars a year to all these folks? Having said that, if we were in the luxury of having a great budget and maybe the budget, as some of us had suggested, we need to get to a point where this budget is going up about a million bucks a year. Because we do have, pension goes up a bit, insurance goes up a bit, people deserve pay raises, you know, a million, maybe a million and a quarter, million and a half. That's all the public can sustain here. We cannot be going up five, five and a half percent a year on the budget because, you know what a real analysis is being done? It's called citizens. And you know what they do? They open their wallet and they see nothing in it. And that's the analysis they do every two weeks when they get their paycheck. Or every quarter when they send the fat tax bill down here. They're seeing moths go flying out and there's about to be a hell of a lot more moths coming up real soon, in January, when they get hammered with a tax increase, the likes of which we have not seen in this city in quite a while. Because you can justify all this stuff from now till the cows come home, okay? Everything you can say, well, if only we had this, it's wonderful. And if only we did this, this would be so much better. But I'm sorry, the deck of cards we're all dealt here is a citizenry that doesn't have all this extra money. We have to work and create a budget that has a sustainable level of growth. And to just say, well, we're just going to spend the money because, you know, we, it's noble and it's wonderful? Yeah, in an ideal world, we would. But we don't, we need the people. Either we're going to take some money from the people who are making a quarter of a million a year and we're going to divvy it up. But by the way, I've seen no plan that's going to make up for this. I've seen nothing anywhere in any report on anything that says, this is how the position pays for itself, or it'll pay three times its salary back in this, this, and this. I mean, a lot of this is pie in the sky. And the fact of the matter is, you have a three million dollar increase. We've got to trim this budget to make it manageable for the citizens. And that's the perspective I'm coming from.
Out of the motion?
Second.
I'd like to speak, please.
Motion and seconded?
I did have several more people in line, but if it's, if we're moving forward, someone motioned and seconded, so we're going to, sorry, Counselor. I agree. So, all right.
Moving the previous question, I mean, that requires a two-thirds vote to end debate.
I mean, all those in favor?
Aye.
All as opposed?
No.
Okay, Counselor Greeney?
I'll be brief. This is another classic example of the tail wagging the dog. So I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate your brevity. I have Counselor Rivera and then I have Counselor DeBarden.
Thank you. I think the topic was focused on a particular issue or order that was filed today, right?
That's correct. And I've been pretty lenient about staying on topic, but.
I think, again, there was a quote that I said for like the last two years, where there's smoke and mirrors, right? Where certain people bring up certain topics and they convolute conversations with different issues and confuse people with process, right? So like, it's not that the mayor put a budget together and all of a sudden he changed it. It's not that HR, all of a sudden says, we need seventy-eight thousand dollars because I didn't manage it right. It's because someone in a different department, and neither of those departments made a decision, right, that shouldn't have been made. We all agree with that. But now it's sounding like we're going to blame the mayor for this particular issue, right? I understand that he is Room One, and I'm not even trying to defend him at this level, but like, I'm just trying to explain process, not confuse people or make up stories that do not exist. We have police officers, yeah, making two fifty. Whose fault is that? This didn't happen today. This didn't happen the last two years. This didn't happen the last four, five years. Who grew it to this level? Who's been, who's the tail wagging the dog? You tell me that. Because the situation that we're in today did not just occur over the last two or three years, once again. I don't understand. And if we agreed to vote on a budget because we, if people thought that it made sense for them, that's their vote. They can do that. If you, you want all of a sudden make it campaign season now and try to do all these things and try to, again, smoke and mirrors, blow smoke up people, whatever, at the end of the day here, the reality is, there are certain things that need to be handled and it can be handled within the budget. Do we need to see a plan? Yes, I do agree. I do agree we need to see a plan. But if it can be handled within the budget, I've heard people say, well, it's in their budget. They can do it. I've heard it many times. Now all of a sudden, if it's in their budget, you can't do it, right? I, it, I think for me, this is part of the problem. This is part of the reason why we had so many constituents in here today, right? Our government has been ineffective for a long time. And now that we're suddenly trying to put things together, is hitting too many people all at once, and they can't deal with it. And now we have people that are coming, yeah, I'll help you. Yeah, I'll save you. Well, where were you twenty years ago? Where were you fifteen years ago? Where were you ten years ago? Where were you five years ago? This doesn't just happen overnight. You can vote no, you can vote yes, that's cool. But all the extra shade is unnecessary. We're here trying to work, bro. Like, literally trying to work. I don't understand. I don't need to, I could go online and make this a meeting where you guys have to do a vote every time. And I'd be home with my kids and leave my screen off, and not have to deal with this pettiness. At the end of the day, it's corny, bro. I just want to come to work. And, and we don't have to agree all the time. I get it. But there's unnecessary shade being thrown for no reason. Like, but hey, it is, and this, this is the work environment we want to be in. Thank you.
I have councillors Devine, then councillor Bacon, then councillor Greeney, and then we're gonna, we're gonna move forward. We're gonna vote. So, councillor Devine.
I don't think I could have said it better than councillor Rivera. This is a person that we hired. The chief negotiated a salary. She's certainly competent. She does not need to be trained. And I think we have to stop this nickel and diming stuff and start being more professional. And I think that we have to welcome this person to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bacon, and then councillor Greeney.
Thank you. I'll be brief. So, my answer to the broader question of how did we get to where we are today is that we've taken votes like this hundreds and thousands of times. And every time we've taken them, we've added to the budget that has become more and more and more bloated every year. This base salary, which is twelve percent above what's in the budget, for a person who is coming to us from the third largest city in the state, which of course commands different salaries than our city that is barely meeting the definition of a city, given the decline in our population. But my main point is that when we keep ignoring our own local ordinances, when we keep breaking our own local laws, when we keep making an excuse to spend more of the hard-earned taxpayers' money, this new base salary will become the floor for the next budget. So the fact that they have the money sitting in their budget today because of, what, we must have ten unfilled positions, perhaps in the police budget right now? Doesn't mean this won't affect the next budget. It will affect it by the twelve percent floor on top of the seventy thousand four hundred seven that only seven people even supported in the first place. So I really ask my colleagues to uphold our laws that we pass, uphold our budget that we pass. And I have compassion for the woman that got hired. It's certainly not her fault. But we need to hold the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Greeney?
Yeah, uh, the position called for a certain amount of money, and this is excessive to that amount of money. That's, that, we just don't, don't have the authority to be granting these raises, and that's basically what it is. I'm sorry.
Okay, great. Um, so with that, on the motion.
Now we're missing two members.
Okay. Um, well, not, councillor Rivera is actually zooming in now.
Oh.
So he's here, and, um, I can, people are, she's in the bathroom. We've, we've voted before while people are in the bathroom, so I think we'll be okay.
Madam President, perhaps we could just hold on this till everybody's back in the room and go to item seventeen. That should be quick. Can we do that?
I mean, I guess. We're gonna have to do that forever for the rest of time then, because we, I've never seen us do that before, so I'm just...
I mean, we take the vote, but not everybody's here.
Well, I've seen it done before, again, so I'm not crazy.
I was on my motion.
We're voting.
On the motion?
Okay, great. On the motion. Um, if you are voting yes... Oh, we only went through the first reading. Wow, time flies, huh? Um, councillor Rivera, are you with us?
Sí, señorita.
Great, um...
Uh, motion to pass the first reading.
Great. Uh, motions to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there another motion, councillor?
I was just waiting for another discussion, but that's cool. Motion to pass the second reading.
No, we've had enough discussion.
I know, I know.
Motion, so that was the motion to pass the second reading. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
And the motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt the order.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
No.
Jordan?
No.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Seven yeas, five nays. Okay, with that, you did not pass.
Onto item seventeen. Uh, the Committee on Finance, to whom is referred an order that the city council approve a scope of work change for a contract between Westeriahurst and the CPA committee. So remaining funds from a CPA project, which came in under budget, can be used to include plaster work in the marble lobby, the great hall, the music room, and the silk room. Recommended that the order be adopted. Councillor Devine?
Yep. Um, we had the meeting, and the chair, the new chair of the CPA committee came in, Jay Ferreira, and he explained what, um, what the remaining balance was for. Um, the original award was for ninety-five thousand, and that was taken care of for the, um, let's see, engineering survey of the main house, the rest, restoration of the chimney and the water-damaged wallpaper on the second floor. The proposed change, expand the scope of work to include ceiling restoration in the marble lobby, the great hall, the music room, and wall restoration in the silk room. The estimated cost for that work was twenty-seven-five. Um, they did budget, uh, Westeria budgeted for an engineering study at the cost estimate of sixty-four thousand, which was in line with prior studies. The total cost for the study by time bond was seven thousand nine hundred. The difference is due to a large part to Time Bond's use of information and data from prior studies to reduce time and costs. And that's why the order should be adopted.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments, discussion? Okay. Uh, so recommended the order be adopted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam President, can we take up item eighteen and nineteen together, please?
Sure. Is there a second? All right. Uh, the motion to suspend the rules and take up items eighteen and nineteen as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eighteen is the Committee on Finance, um, the memorandum of agreement by and between the City of Hoiok and Nage, R1180 Clerical Union, uh, that recommended was the, uh, excuse me, recommended that the order be adopted. And then nineteen is a, uh, transfer of the amount of five thousand um, from contracted services to licensing agent. Also recommended that the order be adopted. Councillor Devine?
First reading.
Motion to pass the first reading. Yes, councillor Jordan?
I wanted to ask under discussion is, did this require an ordinance change before we adopted it? Because I was, I just wanted to clarify if this position needed that, because I know there's something being discussed. Maybe the chairman knows in ordinance, but I thought it was tabled. And I wanted to find out if that's related to this position, or is that another position?
Yeah, I don't know. My understanding that it was a name change. Name change of a position.
And I just wanted to check, maybe the chairman knows, but didn't ordinance, the other night, table an item in the ordinance committee related to a position about, and then this was gonna be the, ultimately, the funding for that change?
Is there a question for councillor Rivera?
If you recalls, or is...
I think, I'm gonna be honest, I defer that question to councillor Bartley because he knows more.
Oh, that's, that's another historic comment.
Councillor, councillor Bacon does have her hand up, though, if you want. I don't know if you wanted to weigh in.
So, the name of the position that we're discussing in ordinance is appeals officer. So I don't know if this licensing agent is the same as what we're talking about in ordinance or not.
I, I didn't think it was, just from watching your meeting, but I wasn't gonna chime in.
My notes reflect that. It's a, it says, um, it went to a new position this year, memorandum of understanding. It, they did research, um, and that position does more than it used to do.
Okay. And I see that Attorney Bissonnet just put his hand up, if that's...
Suspend the rules to allow Attorney Bissonnet to address the council on this matter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Attorney Bissonnet, hi.
Thank you, Madam President, thank the council. Um, that is two separate positions. I think the one in ordinance that we're talking about is the hearings officer.
That is correct.
That would handle, um, many of the code enforcement fines and complaints. This, that position would handle those appeals on, for some of the folks you heard tonight, so they wouldn't have to go to housing court. I think that was the genesis of that order. This one is specifically just, uh, to, much as you did with the DPW director authorized the mayor to hire outside the mid-range. So that would be totally separate things.
Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Attorney Bissonnet. Appreciate that. Yep, I sup, I support this. I supported it in committee, but subsequent to that, I had heard about this. I just wanted to clarify, though, if there was an ordinance change, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um...
Motion to pass second reading?
Oh, was there any other discussion on, so far? Okay. Um, so first, um, let me just do motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion pass second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yeah, he's still there.
Yes. Yes, I was looking for the but, my bad.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yep.
You're not in this vote.
Okay, with that, you've passed. Thank you. Item twenty, um, is from the Committee on Finance, um, a transfer of fifty thousand dollars um, from a paid tree climber to, uh, contract forestry services. Recommended that the, uh, order, motions to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Councillor Devine?
Yep, the, um, oof, so cold. Uh, it was a forestry con, contract, uh, different times to find a tree climber. They haven't been able to find one, so that's why they've had to, um, contract out these services. Um, and they've been trying to find somebody, but unfortunately, they can't find anybody.
Thank you, councillor. Um, any other questions or, or, um, discussion? Councillor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I heard what the chair said, and I don't doubt it. I would just like to, again, think about, there are mechanisms through state law that allow communities to share services. I, I, we talked about this at the last meeting. So if we're, instead of, I mean, John Tuig doesn't want to have to pay these contractors this exorbitant rate. But we ought to have the mechanism in the city, and I think we can do it through state law, to allow us to share services with, you know, like communities. Westfield is probably hurting, and just like we talked about last week with the city engineer, Madam President, or whatever it was, with the city engineer issue. So I, I'm hopeful that we can, we can sort of get away from this, you know, because we got the money, let's throw it into a contractor for a vendor, and we can think a little, a little broader. Um, and again, that has to happen with the mayor's office, and, and, uh, you know, maybe we'll get some feedback from the mayor relative to this down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion is to pass the first reading. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading?
Uh, motions to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the transfer.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yep.
Eleven yeas, one nay.
Okay, that you've passed it. Thank you, everyone. Uh, item twenty-one, um, filed, uh, Committee on Finance, whom is referred an order um, that there be a transfer of one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars, um, as follows, from capital stabilization to capital outlay fuel depot. Uh, motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Councillor Devine?
Yeah, and, um, perhaps councillor Jordan might be able to help me out here, because I'm looking at my notes.
Sure.
And it says, see info sheet, and the info sheet is from Sean Sheedy?
Uh, no, that one's on McMahon. This is, this is coming to us from Carl. Do you want me to go through it?
Would you mind?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
So, um, Carl Rossi came to the finance committee. This is to renovate, uh, we need extensive renovation on Commercial Street at our fuel depot. Uh, as councillors may recall, approximately twenty years ago, the city, before that, we used to basically contract or use a private vendor with local gas stations. There's a lot of reasons why the city wanted to get away from that. One, we wanted to make sure we always had access to gas, uh, lean in particular, and diesel in the event of an emergency. We also did not want to have to pay the excise surcharges, uh, that are required by the state of Massachusetts. Um, so that was another big reason in savings. It is, over the long run, a huge savings for the city to have our own fuel depot, but it's been twenty years. And this facility needs a lot of upgrades between the, the, uh, the pumps, the apron over it, uh, just generally around it. And Carl and the DPW have asked us to approve this. I strongly support it. It's just capital maintenance that we need to do. And, um, they brought this forward, and I think the council should approve it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alrighty, is there any other discussion? Oh, councillor Greeney, and then...
Uh, just quickly, did Carl say how much fuel is contained in this depot?
I did not ask for the size of the tanks. I'm sure if you, we could get that info for you, though, yep.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry, councillor Bartley.
Yeah, I just, just on that, that last point by councillor Greeney, I, I don't know if I would necessarily want to have that be public. Uh, for, that, that's just my thought on that, but certainly councillor should be apprised. And then I just want to say, um, I, I know sometimes we have hard conversations, and I, I don't mean to initiate them, but i, in this case, I, I think the mayor should be credited for developing a capitalist stabilization account. I mean, this is, and funding it, by the way. So, uh, you know, he, he backed up the rhetoric with, uh, with, with funding, and that, that makes a huge difference. And it makes this vote so easy, and because the mayor had the foresight to go ahead and create the thing and to fund it, and to consistently fund it. So, you know, w, we can sometimes have hard conversations, and I know maybe it's uncomfortable for people, but at the same time, you know, when, you know, fair is fair. When the mayor does something great, I think it should be pointed out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion to pass the first reading?
So the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
All right, motion to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the... Alright, motion to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer. Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Izzy?
Twenty-four second clock.
Okay. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney? Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, eleven yeas. Great, thank you, with that, you've passed. Okay, item twenty-three, no, twenty-two? My bad. Item twenty-two is, uh, the Committee on Finance, um, uh, transfer request of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, as follows, from capital stabilization, uh, to the school's capital outlay. The motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading?
First reading.
Counselor Devine?
Yep, this, Sean was in, and this is what, um, Counselor, um, Jordane referred to, this was the McMahon School, uh, boiler replacement. It's, you know, I guess when it rains, it pours, a lot of these things are old, and they, they need to, um, be, be repaired. And he is going to be asking for a waiver from the state for repairs only, rather than putting in a brand-new boiler, which I think the bid results came in at six million dollars. And their project, uh, budget is one point two, so he's asking for a waiver from the state, and he gave us a, a great, um, he's really a, a, a good person to give us this information, so that's why we're in favor of this.
Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion was to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the transfer. Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera? Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, eleven yeas. Thank you, that you've passed it. Item twenty-three, um, from Finance, uh, transfer request of a hundred fifty thousand dollars from the city general stabilization, uh, to schools' capital outlay, um, recommended that the order be denied. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, it was denied because item twenty-two covered what item twenty-three was supposed to be for, so that's why it was denied.
Sounds good. Sorry, I can't stop yawning. It's not you, it's me. Alright, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Oh, I'm so sorry, Counselor Sullivan.
Not opposed.
Okay.
Just a comment, so everybody knows, the other thing that's going on here is what's left in capitaliza, capital stabilization now, for the rest of this year, I don't have the number, I'm doing this from the top of my head, but it's somewhere around three hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. We started out at close to a million. We're three months into the fiscal year, that's what's left.
Thank you. Okay.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Thank you.
Do we have to do, do we do that if it's denied?
Well, you, you, yeah, you have to still vote on the other item, yeah.
Alright, so the motion was to pass the second reading, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
And?
Any yes, Counselor?
Yes is to deny, right?
Yep. A vote yes?
A yes is to deny.
Is to deny.
Any recommendation was to deny.
To deny, correct. Um, so there was a motion to pass the second reading, right? Um, and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to deny this order. Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Thank you. Um, with that, you've denied it. Item twenty-four is, uh, Committee on Finance, uh, that the city council accept the provisions of the community compact grant seed management plan, fifty thousand dollars, no match, and authorize the establishment of a fund.
And if I, oh.
Yes, Counselor.
If I might, uh, could we possibly, uh, suspend necessary rules and take up item number thirty-five with this? We do have a letter from the mayor for both of these items. The first one is item twenty-four, and the next one is a brand-new item thirty-five, two different grants, but.
Okay.
I'd like to see if we could pass them both tonight. One, we already passed, and we're just having the, um, uh, committee report be received, but item thirty-five is brand-new.
Okay, so your motion was to suspend the rules and take up items twenty-four?
And thirty-five.
And thirty-five? And take final action on thirty-five this evening?
Right.
We can, is there a second?
And, and twenty-four, right?
And twenty-four, right?
Yes.
Yep, twenty-four and thirty-five. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, um, Counselor Bacon, did you?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
If there was a time constraint on thirty-five, if that's why you want to pass it?
No, just that the mayor gave us both of them at the same time, and they're both for fifty thousand dollars, and rather than sending it to Finance, since we both have, we, we've already got the language that we would pass them both tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, so, okay, uh, let me just read them. The thirty-four is, um, filed by Counselor Devine, and, uh, it's that the city council accept the provisions of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five State, uh, nine-one-one Department Support and Incentive Gran, Grant, um, three, three oh six, three hundred six thousand four hundred forty-three, no match. Am I looking at the right one?
No.
No.
Thought you said thirty-four.
No, twenty-four would be for fifty thousand, and thirty-five would also.
Oh, thirty-five, I'm so sorry, I was reading thirty-four.
That's okay.
Okay. Just kidding, so thirty-five is, uh, finance, or that the city council accept the provisions of the Community Compact Grant Capital Improvement Plan, fifty thousand, no match, grant, and authorize the establishment of a fund. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, um, just as I explained, um, these are no-match grants. One of them, um, the first one for fifty thousand dollars, I thought of Counselor Givner because of all the speeding and things that have been going on in Ward Four, and this is gonna help that a lot, and then the second one is self-explanatory.
Okay, other discussion, questions? Alright, um, so with that, um, the motion is to, um, adopt the, uh, the order and take final action on, um, item thirty-five. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to accept these two grants. Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Thank you, everyone, with that, you've passed it, okay. I want to get all my papers messed up. Alright, we're on twenty-five now. The Committee on Finance, to whom is referred in order that Hoyok accept the local option excise tax on retail marijuana for adult use of three percent, as allowed by state law, recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Devine?
Motion to pass the first reading?
Oh, I don't even think you, you don't need to do that.
This was done from, uh, we, I don't, I don't know if everybody got the letter, but, um, from the auditor, um, this was actually in place, May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, it's been in place, and, um, if people want, I can read the, uh, amount of money that, um, we've, we've gotten, collected from this, but it, it, the reason it was, um, complied with, because it's been complied with all these years.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? Alright, so, uh, uh, recommended that the order has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Twenty-six, thank you Finance for all your work, great updates.
Thank you Finance Committee.
Yes, yes. Great, solid committee, thanks, everyone. Moving to Joint Committee of City Council and School Committee. Item twenty-six is, uh, the Committee on Joint, uh, City Council and School, uh, that the school department provide a crossing guard at the corner of South Bridge Street and Sergeant Street to protect children and families crossing the street, recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Jordane?
Yes, uh, make a motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Second.
Um, briefly under discussion, I'll defer to Counselor Ocasio if she would like to address it, but I will just say it was, uh, really appreciated by the committee, the hard work that Counselor Ocasio is doing down in Ward Two and South Hoyok in particular. I'm really just looking into all these issues, she's very tuned into her ward, and this is a particular one where, um, an issue was identified to the school department, and the school department stepped up, and they are providing the crossing guard for the kids. So it was, uh, really a happy ending. I don't know if Counselor Ocasio would like to, to speak further, but we do appreciate her efforts, uh, from Ward Two.
Um, the, uh, order had been complied with, the gentleman is there now, he's been there since, uh, school started, so everything's running smooth so far.
Good, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you all, um, so recommended that the order has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So twenty-seven, State and Committee, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So then we have twenty-eight is, um, that the school receiver and Father Albert be invited to, to the Joint Committee of the City Council, um, to discuss the status of the school breakfast and lunch program in Hoyok. Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, um, r- request that the, uh, committee report be received and adopted. Uh, under discussion, um, the Joint Committee had an opportunity, uh, to discuss this matter relative to the parochial school lunch program, um, with both SEDEXO officials, the school officials, as well as the diet, um, diocesan school officials. Basically, the root of the problem related to the counting of the students getting the meals. It ultimately turned out that the number of the meals coming in was higher than the number of kids getting it, and never quite got to the bottom of who's supposed to be doing all the bean counting, but nevertheless, they did get it so that it's back on track. The good news is, um, the state and federal government subsidize these lunches for both the public schools and the parochial schools, under a number of state and federal programs. Um, so it's all about nutrition, it's all about the kids getting the meals, just making sure they're getting the right meal. So a lunch and a breakfast is served to all the children there. Um, there was, after a brief misunderstanding, that did alarm a number of parents, uh, of these children, they were concerned that they might not continue to get the meals. Um, that all got worked out, I appreciate SEDEXO's patience, in particular, their regional director did a particularly fine job, um, and you can tell she's, you know, obviously the ultimate pro, and, um, this, the, uh, Monta Della Rosa and Blessed Sacrament Schools both know what they have to do, the school department is very supportive, so, uh, it all worked out, very happy ending, and, uh, kids are getting their lunches, and everyone lived happily ever after.
Great, love to hear it. Anyone else? Alright, recommended that the order has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, twenty-nine was still in committee, right?
Yep.
Item thirty, uh, actually, the Joint Committee, um, uh, that the administrative assistant add a page to the city's website that highlights Hoyok Sister Cities Program. This looks like recommended that the order has been complied with.
I think this one is still tabled, um, but we did ask, um, and to utilize Jeff's website skills to begin to build, um, you know, some background on some of our Three Sister Cities to Hoyok, but the reason the committee tabled it, Madam President, is they're, they're looking to create maybe some material to also put on the website and some history stuff about it, and they want to coordinate with some of the teachers in the schools and some of the kids to maybe give some added content, so.
Okay.
That's currently still tabled.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, so then I'll keep going. We're on to, thank you for the updates. We're on to motions, orders and resolutions, and.
Like to make a motion to take up thirty-one and thirty-two as a package and suspend rules to take final action?
Thank you, um, motions been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items thirty-one and thirty-two as a package and take final action on them this evening. Both are transfer requests, um, the first thirty-one is for twenty-nine thousand, uh, one hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents from sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty, and I am told that this represents.
Twelve.
Twelve officers. And then item thirty-two is, uh, another transfer request of eight thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and sixty cents, um, from captain firefighters to injured on duty, and this represents three firefighters. Is, the motion is to pass the first reading?
And, um.
Any discussion?
It's the injured on duty, we pass those right away.
Any questions, comments? Okay, so the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And there are motions to?
Pass the second reading.
Pass the second reading. And, uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve these two transfers. Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, with that, you have passed, um, both of those orders, um, let's see, moving forward, we've got item thirty-three, uh, order that there be a transfer of thirty-three thousand dollars, um, from pay engineer, um, and civil engineer to professional engineering services, refer to Finance.
Pass the first reading.
Oh, tonight? You want to go, is it, are we going?
I'm sorry, it's, there was Ben.
Getting ahead of yourself?
To Finance, please.
Okay, all right, didn't want to get crazy. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, no curveballs in this last half hour, please. Um.
Thirty-four to Finance?
Finance.
Thirty-four to Finance, so thirty-four is, uh, that the City Council accept the provisions of the, um, oh, wait, oh, no, this is the one I read by accident. Um, twenty-twenty-five State 911 Department Support and Incentive Grant, three oh six thousand four hundred forty-three, no match, send to Finance?
Yep.
All those in favor?
And, uh, I'm not sure who's supposed to be coming in to talk about this, so, um, if Jeffrey could.
We'll find that out, Jeffrey will work his magic.
I know he will, I know he will.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you, Jeff.
Um, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then we did thirty-five. All right, um, thirty-six is filed by Counselor Jordane, um, that the auditor please update our online filings on the city website to include our audited financial statements from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to current, and our city budgets for fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-five.
Receive, adopt, send to the auditor, and she is starting to work on it.
Okay. Receive, adopt, and send to the auditor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, thirty-seven is filed by Counselor Jordane, and it's, uh, that an ordinance be created that requires the police to report all damage to city property greater than a thousand dollars from a motor vehicle accident to the City Council, Mayor, and Law Department. Further, that the DPW, Mayor, and Law Department have an affirmative duty to pursue collection action against the insurance carrier and/or operator or other reasonable party to make the city whole for damage to city property resulting from motor vehicle accidents. City needs to have an ordinance establishing a policy in this matter to help ensure uniformity of enforcement.
Ordinance?
Ordinance, yep. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, item thirty-eight, filed by Counselors Jordane and Ocasio, um, that the Mayor and DPW please replace the traffic light at the corner of Main Street and Vernon Street as soon as possible. City council, City Council has requested it be replaced multiple times after it was hit in a traffic accident on July first, twenty-twenty-two, it should not be removed because of alleged expense to replace. Mayor and Law Department, please also provide us with what collection efforts, including lawsuits, that may have been filed against the operator who damaged the light controls to reimburse the city for the damage before any applicable statute of limitations expires. Police also advise if the city has potential insurance coverage for this claim, Finance should meet to discuss with all parties involved. Send to Finance?
Yes, please.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thirty-nine, filed by Counselor Jordane, um, that ordinance section eighty-six, uh, dash six be updated from two hundred to a thousand for consistency with state law.
Ordinance?
Ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, forty was filed by Counselor Givner, um, a handicap placard application for Margarita Roldan of one fifty Linden Street. Send to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, forty-one is filed by Counselor McGraw Smith, order that speed humps be placed on Old Jarvis based on the recommendation of the traffic study completed in two thousand eight.
I think it should go to public safety, because there are some complications with it.
Okay, so public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Forty-two, um, filed by Counselor McGaw Smith, um, ordered that the consulting city engineer, DPW Director, and Police Chief provide an update as to traffic calming measures being taken on BMS, including a timeline for the placement of permanent speed humps and the number of speeding tickets taken the last two months. Public safety? Okay, public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, forty-three is filed by myself, uh, ordered that the regular city council meeting scheduled for November fifth, twenty-twenty-four be rescheduled for November seventh due to the election.
Receive and adopt.
Second.
Receive and adopt, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, forty-four was filed by Counselor Ocasio, um, ordered that the city replace the traffic light that was on, uh, James Street and Main Street, um, and no longer there due to car accident, safety issues, kids walking to and from Dean, um, and cars speeding.
Finance?
Finance.
Because we're, we, that, we're going to have that coming in.
It's similar to?
No, it's the same one, but it's, um, Vernon, not James Street.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Sure, but it should be Vernon?
Yeah, amend James to Vernon.
Okay, um, so, uh, we're going to amend it to Vernon Street, add Counselor Greeney, and send to Finance.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, um. Item forty-five, filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that the city put two speed humps before and after the blind turn where the eleven-year-old girl got hit as soon as possible, send to...
Receive, adopt, and refer to the city engineer and DPW for review and implementation, if possible.
Are you good with that, Counselor? Receive and adopt and send to DPW, um, to implement.
Well, maybe even could be, I don't know, if we can't do speed humps, maybe raised sidewalks.
Something.
Thank you, crosswalks.
So.
Okay, so, we're going to add Counselor Greeney.
So could we put two speed humps or, um, raised crosswalks?
Or raised crosswalks.
Or a raised crosswalk, yeah. Friendly amendment.
All right.
Okay with that, Carmen, if we, they call them a raised crosswalk instead? Might need to be that because of the, uh.
Location.
The location has a high traffic.
Can, I'm going to, Counselor Bacon?
I just want to remind Council, we just passed an ordinance that we have to do petitions for raised crosswalks and the speed humps, so we're just going to have to.
Is it an ordinance, is that an ordinance yet? Or it's proposed?
Yeah, we could do temporary without an ordinance for the speed humps.
Okay.
But, yeah.
That's good to know, so maybe that could be communicated to.
It's not in the book, you know, they get late.
Right. We did adopt it, so thank you for the reminder. Um, so, uh.
Study it.
Yes.
Can we change it from, put it in to, see if they could put it in?
Sure, order that the city, um, uh, explore, investigate.
Yeah, investigate, putting in. With, yeah, and report back to the Council with a recommendation, and then, in the meantime, if it's a yes, then we would have to get the signatures.
There's not that likely people in the impact segment.
Keeps us young, right?
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? So I have, um, as an amendment, order that the, uh, city investigate putting two speed humps or raised crosswalks, or singular one, um, before and after the blind turn where the eleven-year-old girl was hit as soon as possible, report back to Council with a recommendation. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so we're sending that to DPW, is that right?
And the engineer.
And the engineer. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, forty-six, filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that the city finish the rest of the sidewalk missing in front of the dealership before Dean Tech, um, dangerous for kids walking on road to school. Do, what was that? Okay, I just didn't hear. Receive and adopt, um, but where do we? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, forty-seven, filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that the city provide a crossing guard at Dean Tech to make sure kids are crossing safely. Send that to.
Joint Committee?
Well.
Send it to the Joint Committee.
You want it, you want it to go to committee and have them come in, or do you want to just send it to the receiver?
Um, I, I, I haven't seen a, uh, crossing guard there, but some, um, parents told me that there's not one there at all.
Right, do you, do you want us to just adopt it and send it to Mr. Soto, or would you, do you want him to come into the committee and discuss it, or would you just rather adopt it and have them do it?
Adopt it and have them do it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, send to, receive, adopt, and send to, um, the receiver, uh, Anthony Soto, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, item forty-eight, filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that the city put up signs saying slow down children walking or crossing, receive and send to DPW?
Is that at Dean Tech, too? Dean Tech?
Okay.
On Main Street?
Yup, so put up signs near Dean Tech on Main Street. Um, friendly amendment.
Second. Um, and receive and send to, uh, DPW, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Forty-nine, filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that the city put up speed limit signs from Dean Tech to James Street. Is that ordinance?
I might have to go to ordinance.
I think that is, and I.
No, no, because you're just posting, it's just an informational sign, that. You're not changing any law, you're just putting up the sign that says what the speed limit is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so receive and adopt. Copy.
And, yup, and amend sign the signs, that's a long area, so you might want more than one.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm amending from signs, and a copy to DPW to set up enforcement.
PD.
Oh, I said DPW, thank you, HPD to set up enforcement, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, fifty is filed by Counselor Jenny Rivera, order that V Care and High Street be allocated an additional parking spot, this request is necessitated by the increase in participants in the operation of two vans for transportation, many of these participants are elderly individuals who rely on wheelchairs, electric scooters, and walkers, um.
Ordinance?
Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, fifty-one, filed by Counselor Jenny Rivera, uh, request, request for school zone designation and traffi, traffic safety measures on Race Street, the new location of Lighthouse Hoyoke at ninety-two Race Street has raised safety concerns due to high traffic speeds, DPW has indicated that the area needs to be designated as a school zone to improve safety, request the designation of Race Street near ninety-two Race Street as a school zone, request the installation of temporary slow down signs in the area to enhance safety while the designation is processed.
Ordinance?
Send to ordinance. So we'll send, we'll receive, adopt, send to Public Works, and then we'll send, um, to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wait, no, it, but I didn't say copy, we're going to send a copy to. Um, I don't know, man.
I think we may need an ordinance change to designate a area, a school zone. Yeah.
So why don't?
Oh, yeah, that you could.
The, well, um, why don't we refer this to ordinance with a copy to DPW?
Sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Uh, fifty-two, filed by Counselor Bacon, uh, order due to the needed removal of raised crosswalks on Homestead Avenue, that our DPW and engineer recommend traffic calming measures that are acceptable for that roadway.
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW engineer.
Receive, adopt, send to DPW and engineer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Fifty-three is filed by Counselor Israel Rivera, order that the city treasurer and auditor list all the revolving accounts the city has and break down their purpose, how much money they collect annually, what is the money being spent on, how much is currently in each account, I file this order for the sake of transparency, um, and giving the public a better understanding of municipal finances.